Evening, everybody. This is being taped, delayed for the folks at home who are watching this on Wednesday or Thursday. It's being actually conducted on Tuesday evening, April 22nd. We're short. Couple of people, Alex Grant is not in this week and Marie Angelides is not yet to return from an arbitration hearing in Boston for our casino mitigation arbitration program. But we do have a quorum and we'll begin this evening. We have some announcements, residents' comments. A liquor license hearing is on the agenda as well as a review of some other discussion items that you'll hear about from the Council on Aging Task Force and some other issues. So with that, I'm going to just quickly begin. Because we've been delayed a little bit, I'd like to adjust the agenda a little bit and we can move to the liquor license because we are somewhat behind. So I'd ask the people who are here for a liquor license hearing to just come forward to sit at the table here. And I would entertain a motion to open our liquor license hearing.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made by Richard Foster and seconded by Paul Santanello. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So the liquor license hearing is open. This is a liquor license hearing by the applicant for the Clubhouse Cafe at Franconia Country Club. And I'd ask that you folks introduce yourselves and I'm not sure who's going to speak for you, but so go ahead. You just have to, may have to move the microphone a little bit or yell.
Vincent Santanello, 963 Williams Street, Long Meadow. I'm going to be one of the owners.
Joseph Garcia, 15 Atherton Street, East Long Meadow. One of the owners.
Hi, Dan Kelly, 145 Emerson Street in Springfield. I'm the attorney for Clubhouse Cafe LLC. So this is a fairly straightforward liquor license application for the Franconia Golf Course on behalf of Clubhouse Cafe LLC. Although Clubhouse Cafe LLC is a brand-new entity, the two individuals to my right are not brand-new when it comes to the service of alcohol. I'll start with the far-right, which is, and they're both 50% owners. Mr. Vincent Santanello was a Springfield police officer for 27 years. Three years of that time, he actually ran the Springfield Civic Center prior to the state taking it over. And as you might imagine, they have a significant alcohol distribution in the Civic Center, a 7,000-seat arena. He was in charge of security there in all aspects. And he was the, he was the general manager of the Civic Center, a much larger venue, obviously, than Franconia. In addition to that, he served in a number of different departments, including narcotics, and still maintains a good relationship with law enforcement going forward. He's been in liquor service industry his entire life. His family's owned bars going back decades. So I'm not going to list all of the bars that he's owned or worked at. The most, two recent incarnations I would suggest are representative of Mr. Santanello's work recently are Bentley's in East Long Meadow and the Tap House Grill, which is on Route 20 on going towards Palmer, but actually in Wilbraham. So you're going to see some of the same types of service that you've, the people, patrons of those places come to expect, which are top-notch food and very good liquor service. Everyone will be working at Franconia will be tip-certified. And Mr. Santanello, with his background in law enforcement, does all the hiring as well. To my immediate right is Mr. Garcia. Mr. Garcia also has a long-term relationship in working in the liquor industry. He's worked there since he was a young man. He's worked in a number of different establishments in downtown Springfield, everywhere, from starting off with the, you know, the busboy when younger, working his way up to the assistant manager. Most recently, he works in a waste manager with a national company and he's a broker for a national company. He'll be involved in the helping of the management of the restaurant as well. So they'll both be hands-on owners. If you go up there, the chances are you're going to, on any given night, if you want to golf and you go in there afterwards, the chances are highly likely you're going to run into one of these two individuals, if not both. And if you don't see them, you'll definitely see their families because it's definitely going to be a family-run business from both sides. So as I'm sure you know, Springfield has awarded them a contract for a couple of years. This year, it's already started, is going to be the first year. And they're looking forward to having a successful season. So we're hopeful that the board will act favorably on this application tonight so that we can get the, the ABCC to rule quickly on this and they'll be able to serve beer at the, and alcohol at the clubhouse. And that's about all I have unless, I know you're running late, so I'll cut it short there.
No, it's fine. We'll take the time.
Okay.
Do either of the applicants, do you have any comments directly or, not that you need to, I just didn't know if you had anything you wanted to say?
I would just say, reiterate, Attorney Kelly, that this is going to be a family-run establishment with both our families. We've been, we've done extensive work inside the place to clean it up. It was kind of beat up inside. The response by the golfers and everybody that's visited there, it's been, it's been a tremendous response and we look forward to work with the town of Long Meadow. They've made the same commitment to East Long Meadow and Wilbraham, that we run very good establishments. We've never had, ever had a violation in any of our establishments ever, so we have a good rapport with the ABCC also.
Open it to questions by the members of the Select Board. Paul, I don't know if you want to?
Yeah, I have a question for Attorney Kelly. Since we've seen you here a couple of times regarding Franconia.
Yes.
I think it's incumbent upon the license holders to make sure that the city notifies the board in a time so we're not going through this because it's only hurting them. It's not hurting the board. And we already issued a license, obviously, for someone that obviously wasn't awarded the contract and we're back here. Thankfully, it's not a similar issue to when you were here last time. I just would urge you two to make sure that the city of Springfield notifies this board or the town well in advance of us issuing licenses in December to me, you know, here's the contract, we're good to go and that type of thing.
We weren't even awarded. We sat down for an interview and got awarded verbally in February 24th.
Dan, can you pass?
Yeah, yeah. And they actually didn't have their contract until the last week of March, as I'm sure you know. So that was part of the problem. Well, you're right. It's the city's blunder, it doesn't hurt the city, it hurts the gentleman to my right. So you're right, Mr. Santanello, we'll definitely try to stay on them and be proactive on that. Thank you. Yes.
Richard, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
I have, I have a couple of questions. First one has to do with a comment you made that all employees will be tip-certified. And I noted that in the application, there were two or three tip certifications in there. And I guess it answered one of the questions I had, which was why they're from Bentley's Bistro when in fact that had nothing to do with, I thought, the Franconia, you know, LLC or?
We wanted to give some of a resume for people, just so you wouldn't think they were just bringing just any person in that.
I guess, but my question is, will, will either of you, as the managers, have tip certification? And how do I know that there'll always be somebody there who's tip-certified based on what I just read in the application?
We can, we'll keep on file with the town if you'd like, their tip certifications, if that would, that would suffice to.
So they will be, you will be tip-certified or you are?
They are. And I'll make sure you get.
The reason we have Bentley's Bistro there is because those.
Right, I understand it now.
Everybody wants to work at the golf course. And it's going to be tough to keep everybody at Bentley's and we're running into that problem.
No, no, I understand that now that I heard. But it didn't, nowhere in the application did it say that, I assume that there's going to be a manager there most of the time. And I was concerned that the managers also have tip certification because ultimately you're responsible for what goes on there.
Absolutely. Not just the managers, everyone who's there will be handling alcohol will also be tip-certified. But I'll make sure that Mr. Garcia's and Mr. Santanello's tip certification is on file with your board.
And I guess the, the only other observation I had was the same as Mr. Santanello here about the, the timing of this. It's unfortunate that, and I think Attorney Kelly, we've said this before to, to the folks who deal with the city of Springfield, they've got to get their contracts to expire in a more timely manner. Because it's tough when your contract runs through March and then they decide not to renew it after you paid for, the previous person paid for a liquor license that they can no longer use. And it kind of puts everybody under the eight ball when you've got a liquor license in March. We can't hold the hearing until, here we are in April and you've probably missed a weekend or two of golf, so.
Right, absolutely. Now, getting the contract so late in the, in the game really puts them behind the eight ball because as you know, we have to know, we have to give it to you, we have to put the application together, get it to you, notice the hearing, have the hearing. And then as you know, even after you, if you act favorably tonight, which I hope you will, that still does a lot of them to serve tomorrow, as you know. They have to go through the ABCC, which is a multi-week process at best. So you're right, we're trying to stay on the city as best we can. But they did get, I will note, this bid is for a couple of years, so hopefully the next couple of years we run smooth.
Hopefully, but we've been there too, unfortunately. The last, the last question I have, which I ask every time, is since Debbie House is here, Debbie, I assume they've delivered to you a check for, for the advertisement for the?
Today, yes.
That's perfect. Thank you. Okay, I don't, I don't have any other questions. Marie, I know you came late, I don't know if you have any questions.
No.
Okay. So with that, I'm moved to close the, entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made by Richard and seconded by Paul. All in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is closed. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. At this point, we can deliberate, have a discussion or entertain a motion.
I move to approve the liquor license for Franconia Golf Course, the Clubhouse Cafe as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There is no discussion. Hearing none. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes four to nothing. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate you coming. We've got documentation that we'll be signing. We send it forward to Boston and they do whatever they do with it.
Thank you.
It was, Richard made the motion, Paul seconded it.
I've got a question related to this that has nothing to do with these folks.
No, I thought Paul made the motion.
No, I thought, sorry, I have two.
I have a.
Go ahead. Excuse me, go ahead, Paul.
A question related to Franconia. We issued a liquor license to Peg Boxwell. Did we have to have a hearing to revoke that?
She surrendered it.
She did? Okay. Thank you.
That's it. So now I'd like to just go back to the beginning of the meeting and I apologize to the people here who have been waiting, but we did have a time constraint on the liquor license hearing. Just a couple of announcements. It's been that we're now, in the month of April, our construction season has begun. Long Meadow Street near Barrington Road will be closed for, will not be closed, will be limited to one lane for most of the balance of this week while we tie in some water, new water system that we're doing on, on Barrington Road. So I'd ask our residents to have caution when they're traveling during daylight hours in the Long Meadow Street near Barrington Road. Secondarily, our town warrant is now available. It will be in Thursday, April 24th's reminder. And beginning April 24th, it will be available to be picked up at Town Hall for anybody who may not have or may not receive a copy of the reminder. Just ask Select Board if there are any other comments or town manager, any other, any other announcements that we should be having at this point.
I appreciate you bringing up Long Meadow Street. The roadway will be plated at night because they're working on the Underground Main. And so caution at night as well.
Okay. Great. Ask for any residents' comments. Do any of our residents who are attendants here have a comment this evening? Seeing none, thank you. How about Select Board comments? Great. So Ms. Angelides, who is here, has just asked me to kind of continue just until she gets in the swing of things here.
Well, I'm not sure if I will be this evening. It's been a long day, so you do it, I appreciate it.
So at this point, we have some minutes to approve, so I'll entertain motions to approve minutes.
I got a question. I'll, I'll make a motion to. I only had one set of minutes. Were there multiple sets in there?
I sent an email today. Alex sent me a few more.
Okay.
I asked him last week, but I didn't get them till today.
Okay. Then I move to approve the April 7, 2014 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Any comments? Any corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of the April, the April 7th, 2014 minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, we're going to defer to the others because we just received them. Okay. And the next thing on our old, old business was a, is a fire chief's contract. But I think we're going to, if nobody objects, I'd like to review that in executive session and then go back into open session perhaps later this evening to vote on it. We will certainly repeat the vote or announce that vote. Just so everybody knows, our fire chief's contract is up for renewal. There have been some discussions with him and that's going to be discussed, reviewed, and voted upon this, this evening. Finally, old business is an arbitration update. Ms. Angelides and our town manager, Stephen Crane, our fire chief, our police chief, we're in Boston today for a full day of arbitration hearings with, with the Mass Gaming Commission's arbitration panel that's been appointed by, or agreed to by us and MGM. And I'd ask for just a quick summary report, knowing that we won't know anything for a bit. I don't know. Pass up?
It was a long day. We started at 9:30 and we finished after 5:00. And we had two traffic experts testifying, two public safety, plus the police chief, plus the fire chief, and our town manager and as well as several of our attorneys. So it was a very long day, but I think we presented well. I was very impressed. Our employees especially. Stephen did a fabulous job in, not only in presentation but rebuttal. And our, our two chiefs were amazing. They really stood up and, and gave, I felt, very important testimony for the town. And so now we are waiting for, decisions will be done by April 30th. And it's supposed to be either they're going to take our agreement or they're going to take the MGM's agreement. And they're supposed to decide between the two. They're not going to be really fiddling around with the contracts too much or the agreements. And so we should have an answer by, they promised April 30th a written agreement. Did you want to add to that, Stephen?
Only just to say that for those who have been monitoring this issue through either reports in the media or through discussions in open session here at the Select Board, what we presented today was really consistent with what we've been talking about for months now, which is traffic impacts and public safety impacts that we feel are predictable with the development of the casino. So that was really, that was, that was the basis for our best and final offer and that was really the nature of much of the discussion today.
Can I just ask a question? Is, is our best and final offer a public document and is it posted on our website? Would it be posted on our website?
It was submitted, when we submitted to the Gaming Commission, we did release a copy of the media, so it has been reported on.
I'm just wondering if we should put it somewhere where the citizens of Long Meadow can at least see where we were.
Yeah, and I think today, we were actually going to be doing a presentation today with a PowerPoint that would have been given to us, but I think since we ran so late and we're just, we'll put that off until next time. But maybe putting that PowerPoint presentation, everything on the website would be a good idea for the residents to know exactly what was presented today.
Does anybody have any, I mean, it's a public document. It's a public document.
The presentation from today isn't necessarily a public document.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that.
But after the decision gets made.
Well, I'm more concerned about people in town knowing what we went forward with as a best and final offer because there's a lot of publicity about our, some initial offers and subsequent either negotiations or lack thereof, I don't know. But I think people ought to know what, what we took to the, to the arbitration panel. For that matter, what MGM took to the arbitration panel as well. That's a different story. Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Any questions for Marie or Stephen? All or Richard? No? Great. We're going to move forward to new business. I think that's the extent of our old business. We have a presentation by the Council on Aging Task Force and I'm not sure who's, Rose?
We're all welcome.
You can, we're all welcome. Marilyn, Rose.
I'm not going up.
Saul says, Saul says, no, we've got four chairs, but we've got one microphone. So come on, come on up.
We share. The seniors share.
Share.
Rata Ray on our. Phil Hallahan.
We're going to give you another microphone to see. No, that, it's not in this room, but they can hear you on TV. It's for TV.
Okay.
Rose, go ahead. Just introduce yourselves for the people at home and.
My name?
One at a time, we're going. We have a schedule. We're seniors.
Thank you, Eleanor.
Phil Hallahan is, is the chairperson of our Vision Task Force, but he's unable to be here tonight. But I respectfully ask for your support for Article 30 on the warrant, which has to do with the feasibility of assessing senior needs in the town of Long Meadow. A measure of society, the measure of a society is how we treat our older folks and our young. We do a great job of taking care of our young kids. And now it is time for us to turn the conversation toward another segment of the population, seniors. And so therefore, we've done a lot of preliminary work and we're at the point where we really need a feasibility study. The statistics show that the over-50 crowd is coming loud and strong. And in a few years, there's going to be 150 million people over the age of 50. And Long Meadow will certainly reflect that trend. We're asking, we're, we're very concerned about the tax rate. And I have to compliment this board on having a balanced budget and trying to seek revenue in other manner, in another manner. But we are trying to seek our fundraising by looking at grants, sponsorships, and donations. Remember, seniors are cheap to keep in town. So your support would be really appreciated for Article 30. Thank you.
In the early 1970s, a politician, actually a congressman from Georgia, made a comment in response to a question that he was asked that had national exposure. His comment was, "Don't fix it if it ain't broke." Well, that resonated with a lot of people and it resonated with me as well. But after you think about it for a while, you realize that much of the progress has come on the basis of fixing what isn't broke. Improving it, expanding it, using it for different things. Which brings me to our point. We feel that the program for the senior citizens in Long Meadow is not broken. But we would like to take the $35,000 that Rose was talking about and use it to hire a consulting firm, probably the one that's part and parcel of the University of Massachusetts in Boston and specializes in gerontology. Come here, work with us, take a look around, and point us in the right direction. We have some ideas, but they're probably a little prejudicial. And we would like to get an objective opinion, which is exactly what we'll get from the consultants that we retain.
Eleanor Stoller, Meadow Road. I too came here to request that you support our Article 30 for the feasibility study for a suitable senior center. And I'm going to give you a couple of examples that some of you already know. We had a meeting in March, I believe, and we had the honor of having three selectmen attend the meeting. And the only place we could have that meeting was in what's called the game room. There was only, the table was only large enough for our members of the Board of Directors. One of our selectmen sat at the pool table and, you know, could writing things. The other one sat on the side of the pool table. And the third one sat at the, no, they're at the ping pong table. Two of them were at the ping pong table. One was sitting next to the pool table. And our executive director of the Council on Aging was also sitting in between there someplace. So, you know, when you've got pool table, ping pong, exercise machines behind you and the only available place to have a meeting is that room. And the other thing that I want to mention is our dining room. It only seats 62 people at one time per the fire department, Long Meadow Fire Department. And there's many people that on special meetings that they, special meals, they want to come in, that they're, they can't come to lunch. I don't think that's right. So with that, I say please approve our request for Article 30 for a feasibility study for a suitable senior center. Thank you.
I'm Marilyn Hurst. I'm vice chair of the Council on Aging and a member of this task force. My job tonight is to share a couple of stories with you about seniors and how they came to use our current senior center. The first one's about myself. I first became aware of the existence of our center and senior, we're saying senior center as it used to be called, now it's the adult center. In 1999, I had just returned to Long Meadow, experienced a serious illness and long and slow recovery. I also couldn't return to work yet. I was at a loss as to what I could do to keep from climbing the walls. Then I read about the senior center asking for volunteers to help with the collating of their newsletter. Well, I knew I could at least help in that sense because the whole idea of being capable at all was kind of at its ebb. So I was greeted warmly. I called for directions because I didn't even know where it was. I was greeted warmly and put to work and it was a fantastic feeling, that of being capable, wanted, and appreciated. A dear friend I made during these years was introduced to the senior center as a way to build herself a new life. Her husband had just been diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease, so she knew she had to make changes in her lifestyle in order to cope. She too started volunteering at the senior center. However, we were fortunate in that we weren't too shy to take the bull by the horns and dare to take a chance by calling. As we get older, many of us feel we aren't as capable and may not perform well enough to be accepted. We know that many seniors are discouraged from coming to our center now because when they first enter, they see the long hallway. To walk down the hallway once is perhaps okay, but to walk it repeatedly to get to their activity and then to the bathrooms can be overwhelming and often is. Our task force of five has been at work since September, gathering information and some of which you've already heard. The study for which we are requesting funds will serve not only to identify the services and programs needed for our seniors, but those of our entire adult population. Please support Article 30 feasibility study request for a suitable Council on Aging Center for Long Meadow. Thank you.
Thank you. You have any other comments? I guess I just ask the board here if there are any questions.
Yeah, I have a question. Of course, anything I say is going to sound like I'm against it.
No, that's okay.
And I'm really not. I think, and everyone knows it, the center, I'm more concerned about the process. Because I know we've got other communities that recently built senior centers and the A&E firms have designed them and all the specs are ready to go. And it seemed like they've done a pretty good study. And I wonder why we couldn't use that study. Is the purpose of the study to get to the next spot? Well, I mean, we certainly know that you could use a new center. I mean, I feel personally that you could use a new center. I mean, I, you don't need to hear anymore, it's been said here tonight, or to go to the center, when it's active during the day, to realize that it's, we took an elementary school and turned it into adult center without much modification. And that doesn't work under any extreme. There's a lot of difference between five-year-olds and 80 and 70 and 60 and whatever-year-olds. And their patterns of routine, their daily activities, et cetera. So you're going to spend $35,000 to tell us what we already know? That's, that's my only fear because I know and you know, we need another center. So I'm wondering from your perspective, is it so that we have a document that you feel will have a lot more credibility than, than we or your board would going forward? Is that the purpose of this?
Well, actually, we've given you the rationale, so we're over that. But we need an expert to tell us exactly what we need. We need someone to come in and study our needs and tell us whether or not we should build a new building or renovate the one we have or go to another site. We're not experts, okay? So we need to call upon people that are well-trained in the field, they have PhDs and every other thing in gerontology. And so we feel that we're not expert enough to go to that, that second level. Hopefully, they would give us a concise process to follow from their background experience and knowledge. In addition, they would, the feasibility study would entail an architect that would probably adapt a building that would be suitable for elders. For example, the bathrooms that we have now were made for elementary school children. For example, the bathrooms that we have now were made for elementary school children. They would probably make them more adaptable to a senior population. They have handrails going along various hallways. And in other words, as you get older, there are some compensations that need to be made. We're not expert enough to really address that.
There's a camera parked in the...
It's in front of the salad door that we break prisoners, and it needs to be moved.
It's my camera. You want me to move it?
Yes, please, sir. I was asked to have it moved. I appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, and I understand, totally understand and agree with everything you said, but I know, I noticed in the paper, there's, East Long Meadow's going off for, or I think it was East Long Meadow, maybe it was Wilbraham, somebody's going off for the same study at the same exact price. And I'm saying, these studies have been done at close towns around us, and they will tell you what you want them to tell you. And they will tell you that the best possible place is a brand-new center.
I don't know, I don't know whether their study would be germane to our environment here and what we would need to meet the needs of our senior population in Long Meadow. I'm not so sure that they're that adaptable. I have no idea. I do know that East Long Meadow spent $2 million on renovating an old building, and they're looking for more land now, and it's not suitable. They don't feel as though they have enough space in that building. We've gone to Holyoke, we've gone to Agawam and Enfield, we've seen their senior centers. They're absolutely spectacular. And so in comparison to what we're giving our seniors in town...
But that's the exact point I was trying to get at. I mean, you, there is a model out there that is ideal.
I'm just gonna ask that we not debate the topic here.
Well, it wasn't. I was just asking a question about it. Because, you know, I hate to see us...
Plenty of time to debate this on May 18th.
You asked for questions.
I know.
I welcome the conversation. This is great for me, because this is the first time that we've really been open about it. We've had representatives from Select Board who have been very positive in supporting us along the way by attending our meetings and listening, and I'm sure they've gotten some information from us. I welcome this, Mr. Foster. Please, if you have any more questions, if I can answer them, certainly, I would, I would answer them to the best of my ability. But as I said, I'm not an expert. I don't have a PhD in gerontology. I just have a lot of common sense and experience. Rose Morris, M-O-R-A-C-E, 46 Longfellow Drive.
I just, I don't necessarily have a question as much as an observation, because I've heard two different messages here this evening, and the different messages are, we'd like somebody to come in to study the needs of the seniors, and yet, the article is very specific, and I'm reading it, and it says, "To complete a study of options to provide suitable space and facilities." So it doesn't talk about programming at all, and I guess all I'd ask is that when, you know, when we talk about what we're gonna use the money for, that we make sure that it meets what we're saying, and that is to study space or to study programming. Because it's, that's not what the Warren article says.
May I speak to that? Actually, the way the article is stated is correct, and the reason for the space, et cetera, et cetera emphasis is because right now, we don't have the proper space allocation for the programs and services our seniors need. We're limited in what we can do.
Thank you. That's fine. Thank you. Any other comments from Marie?
My understanding is that there are these studies out there, and have you looked at some of these studies? And who, what other towns have done these studies?
May I speak to that?
Yes, go ahead.
We have, we've had access to the one done in Falmouth. Now, they're a population of 32,000, that's about double of what Long Meadow is. And it's very interesting. I didn't read the whole thing. It's over 100 pages of data and information. However, what I did glean from it, and that's why some of my comments had to do with what would happen had we do, if we do that sort of study here in Long Meadow, is that it would give the town a forward look, both a current and future look as to what's going to happen in our town vis-à-vis the growing, the baby boomers coming in to seniorhood, so to speak. And therefore, the study there in Falmouth, they separated the people, they had two groups, 45 to 59, and then 60 to whatever, you know, how far up they went. And the two cohorts were studied separately to see what the needs were and how they overlapped and that sort of thing. And numerical documentation was required and performed, so that you end up with a study, even if we can't use it right away, it will be applicable for quite a few years to come. So it's not money wasted in terms of whole-town planning, too. And that, we wanted to look at it that way also, that it's not just a pinpoint picture of the seniors now. This is much more encompassing.
George, just, no, microphone. There was also a study done by the University of Connecticut in Farmington for Holyoke. And much, much the same as the one that was done for Falmouth, they almost always come out and say, "You need a new, you need a new building." When we talked, when we talked to an architect who had seen our building, he said, "The first thing that you have to get rid of is a long hallway." And that's the first thing you see when you walk into our senior center.
I might add, though I was shut down, couldn't ask him more questions. But in reviewing the statements that we've heard, it comes back very, very narrowly to what I was talking about, is that it's not, it's not that we spend the 35, it's where do we spend it the best to get something that we move forward with? Because I know exactly what you want, and it's exactly what we want, but it's where is the best place to spend that 35 right now?
I would just like to refer to a segment of my employment. I ran an information technology company that was owned by Baybanks. And we were using equipment that was really obsolete. And it was going to cost us about $8 million to get up to speed. Well, my boss, who was the chairman of the board, said, "Yeah, I know what you're talking about, but I have to please my Board of Directors, and so I'm going to bring in a consulting group to authenticate this, give it some credibility." And it cost him $250,000, but he didn't get any guff from his board members, and it went right through. And I think that $35,000 will do the same thing for us. You know, it brings some credibility to document the need for a new building.
I'd just like to add, oh, excuse me. I would like to add that the characteristics of this town may not be that much like Falmouth. They have more, more of a, more of a larger population or whatever. We have 4,534 people over the age of 60 in Long Meadow, 39% of them vote, okay? But that's beside the point. Another thing is, we'd like to try to encompass other departments in town. For example, the Historical Society, the Library, the Health Department. We're just, we're just talking right now, but we need experts to come in and tell us how we could integrate all those other people into a senior center. So as I said, the study would be germane to Long Meadow and not to any other town around. And I don't think $35,000 is that much to ask for.
Mr. Santinello?
I just want to say, the email address is p.santinello@longmeadow.org, because I, you know, I've heard tonight that we don't have a center that affords us the opportunity to serve our seniors. And yet, we have an executive director of that, of that community, of that center, who I haven't heard one thing as to what we don't have to serve our population. So I've been at a meeting where I know Phil was part of the task force that was reviewing all the programs and so forth, and I asked a question that I like to ask Park and Rec and the schools and so forth, is that as we keep adding programs, what have we deleted? And one of the reasons we were in that meeting room, I don't know if you guys saw, when I left, there were three people in the other room doing German. So in that big meeting room we could have been in, there were three people taking German lessons. One was the instructor, I should say, so two people taking German lessons. So someone has to tell me, for example, why that would take priority over the COA Board in that room when it was for three people. And to me, that didn't, not, not that it didn't meet the needs of the seniors, okay? But, you know, I would like to, my only point is, at what point, you know, when we say we're not meeting the needs of the seniors, do you weigh a program to tie up a whole room for two people to take German lessons? Now, it might be important for the two people, they might be traveling abroad, I get that. But some of that tells me that maybe the director of the center wasn't aware that there were two people taking, I would hope that she would know that, and I would hope that the scheduling would be done. And what I don't like to see is something that's gonna be done with a solution looking for a problem. And I still would like us to define what's not being done. And Eleanor, you talked about 62 people at lunch. I, that I can understand, that there's a maximum, that I can take. But I'd like to see some statistics that back it up and say, "Well, four days out of five, people can't be seated," as opposed to maybe one day a month. And I'm making that up. I'm not, those are my, I'm just making up for an example. Those are the things that I, that I would feel that would be important to know, is that how many times are we turning people away? Because, first of all, we never should. That's number one. Okay? So, but if there's, if it's happening more and more and more, then we've got a larger problem than what we know about. Okay? And then I'd like to know, what are those things that we're not providing? And then we need, I think, one of the things that, because I don't know where it went, but I thought that was one of the things that Phil was looking at, because he had a big binder that had all these different things. I forgot how many programs are being offered. I know it's a lot. I know it was a lot.
Over 150.
Right. So my, the question is, out of the 150, then, I would just say to you is that, how many should be offered? So is bumping a COA Board meeting for two people taking German lessons worth it to do, for example? And I, those, I haven't seen that, though. And I haven't seen the specifics as to, as to why that the center is not, well, let me go backwards. I haven't had specifics presented to me as a member of this board as to what need we're not serving. And I don't know if anybody else has, and I'm not speaking for them, I'm just speaking for me. Maybe it came in a meeting I missed or was late to, but I haven't had anything presented to me by the COA Director that said, "Look, we need X, Y, and Z. This is what's missing." You know, I asked a question of the director of, because we expanded her hours by five hours, and I was told, well, we could offer, we could do more things. There wasn't one specific thing listed as to do more things meant. I'm sure there's a million things we can do. But it's nice to have some of that information ahead of time, you know, to make a, make a decision on it, because I don't know, I don't know what we're missing, I don't know what we're hitting the mark on, because it hasn't come back this way. I'm just letting you guys know that. And that's, that's my irritation, not with your article, not with the petition article, but just in general. We're asked, and it happened during the budget process, too, of, "We need X, Y, and Z, but there's not that flow that comes this way." And I'm telling you that, I think, to present it at a town meeting, have that information, because I think that makes a difference to people, instead of generalities of programs not being offered. It definitely would help with me, you know?
Could I, would we respond to that?
Sure. Well, that's...
Go ahead.
I totally, I totally see your point and agree with you. One of the difficulties we've had is, we're not the experts. We could come up with the lists and everything, but we want to have it done professionally, because they have, they go about it with a certain science that is absolutely infallible. I'm not, I better not compare that to the Pope. Sorry. But it really is good. And if you read some of these studies, they really are phenomenal, and they will give you, they'll be able to pinpoint. Right now, there's just so much the five of us can do, and we're more on the layperson side of this. But what we've done, and you saw some of the stuff Phil put together, is really a lot of information. Now, how to digest it and present it so that it has the most meaning. That's what, that's what we're trying to do now, and that's why we want this professional input. And if they go with the two cohorts, and then the surveys and the questionnaires that are based on what they find out about our town, your, the information you will garner from this is absolutely incredible.
Okay. We're gonna have to send it on.
Okay. Thank you all very much. I appreciate you taking the time this evening.
Thank you for having us.
Because you know that the reason Phil couldn't make it is because he was taken to the house on Thursday. He had surgery on Sunday.
Really? He's home.
He's okay.
Had surgery Sunday morning, and was home Sunday night.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
He's doing well. But that's the reason he's not here.
And I think, Paul, he could have given you some numbers. I think Phil could have given you some stats.
I agree, yeah.
Yeah. Just, I just didn't have them available.
I understand.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, folks. The next item on our agenda is, we need to appoint a tax title custodian.
Yeah. I move to appoint Town Treasurer, Collector Mary Pequinat, tax title custodian through June 30th, 2015 pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 77B.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Can I just ask one question? Is this just a continuation? She's already the tax title? Yeah, okay, that's what I just wanted.
So, just so everybody heard that, she is a...
Yeah, oh, yes. In case I couldn't hear the BBs rattling around, I shook my head. Yes, she is a tax, currently a tax. This is extension for her.
Okay, fine. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Four zero. We have on here, it says vicious dog complaint, but apparently it's not a formal dog hearing, since we didn't have a hearing stated, noted.
No, this is, this agenda item is just so the board will set the hearing.
Oh, okay, that's what...
Yeah.
Okay.
Does the board have to collectively?
I just think you have to pick a date, so Debbie can advertise the hearing, or just say, just commit that at the next meeting, we're gonna have a vicious dog hearing.
It's gotta be fit in the schedule. I know, the next hearing, the next meeting, we've got a presentation by the PVTA.
Oh, yes.
And we're gonna do the town, the warrant with the...
Yeah, and we also...
And what's the, so that's the, what's the date on that? Is that the fifth?
Fifth or sixth.
Okay, so if we wait...
Generally, we meet with the moderator to go over the warrant.
Right. Can we wait till the following meeting, which would be the second meeting in May? Or is there a problem with that?
I don't think the timeframe is up to...
No, I think it's, I mean, I think it's up to the board, but you just wanna make sure that the, I do think this is a pressing issue with the dog. I think there's been more than one complaint. That said...
We set another date separate just for the dog? Because I, I think that was actually one of the things we talked about at the board level at one point, because we had a couple of these in the same year, and they, they tend to take up a huge amount of time, because it's very emotional for everybody that's involved, from the dog owner to the ones making the complaint, that I think it might be worthwhile to have it just as a hearing for that dog complaint.
I'm just wondering if we can't do it at the next meeting and schedule a special meeting the Monday before town meeting, which we've always had a, we've not always, we've often had a special meeting the night before our town meeting to go over things with the moderator on that, and therefore, we can offload some things on the May 5th or...
That probably makes sense. So if we do the next meeting, and then we'll, we'll try to have a meeting...
Richard, you okay with...
Oh, absolutely. I think, I need sooner than better.
Yeah, but I think, but I do think we need a meeting...
So, in other words, the dog hearing for the 5th, and then we'll put the warrants off for the day before the town meeting, which will be the 12th, which will be another meeting.
So long as LCTV can broadcast that special meeting before town meeting live, so people can watch and hear the explanation versus a replay after the town meeting, which wouldn't be very useful. That's...
And that's possible?
Yes, if we have it in the meeting room.
Yes.
Well, the problem is, we can't, because the school committee's there on the, on the 12th.
Could we ask them to leave?
Well, Stephen, I'm not convinced that, that we really need, I mean, the purpose of that isn't to go over the warrant articles for the people at home. The purpose of that is for us to go over with the town moderator... The purpose of that is for us to go over with the town moderator.
Okay.
To avoid surprises.
To avoid surprises and make sure he understands, you know, what, we're thinking we understand what he's going to do. He also has a chance to review with us the Rules Committee. Is that who he has generally?
He has his own Rules Committee, correct?
Yeah, he has a Rules Committee that talks about that.
And it depends, Paul, if we could even do that maybe 6:30 to 7:00, just before the school committee, depends on what your schedule's.
I'm just, yeah, I'm telling you that the, the dog hearing is going to go for a while.
No, we're talking about the 12th.
You're just, that's fine.
Yeah.
As long as I know he has other head time.
Okay.
Just to go live.
Just to go live? So, we have one half hour to get that done? And is that okay with you, Richard?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I, I don't know how long that takes, but I think we ought to, we need to put aside the time.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe we can push the school committee half an hour or one way.
Mm-hmm. That's an idea, too.
One, 6:30, 7:30.
So, we'll work on that. And so, I guess the dog hearing, we'll go ahead and put on the 5th. If you feel it's released, we'll get that going first.
Okay.
We had, Mark, now that we've got the entire board, could we back up and do select board comments again, now that we got everybody here and we got, it looks like we got time, we cleared everybody out of here?
Sure. We can either do select board, or, or we can just wait till the end and do select board comments at the end.
We'll do it at the end.
Why don't we do select board comments?
Yeah. Now, we got the whole board.
That'll keep to us. Okay, that's great. We have, next schedule is that, is that town managers' reports. I just wanted to make a comment, we are going to have an executive session this evening, and we'll probably return it to an open session afterwards to finish a vote, but we'll talk about that also in our next meeting, whatever we do. But town managers' report's next.
Thank you. I have the monthly reports before you. And I would note that, as you started in your select board comment, Mark, that construction season will be starting, the projects that were approved at the last town meeting will be going again, either, either finished up, in the case of Merryweather-Woodside-Williams, or completed, in the case of the Barrington Road Water Main Project. And like I said, the, they have to cut across Long Meadow Street to tie in the water main to create the loop that's on the other side, it's on the east side of Long Meadow Street, hence the plating and the one-lane closure, and that should, that should just take this week. And then, next week, work on Laurel Street, which I believe is a sewer project, will And that's, that's going to run a few weeks, and that's obviously, I think it's a very deep excavation, and so it will be a traffic, a traffic issue. We will be putting together another Blackboard Connect group for just that area around Laurel Street, like we did with Merryweather, to try and keep people up to date on what's happening.
I believe that's between Converse and Bliss, or Converse and all the way to Williams?
Farmington, I think, all the way down to Bliss.
Okay, Farmington, Bliss.
Yeah. A few other things that have been talked about before, Cartograph, OMS, we were supposed to roll that out earlier this year, but with some changes to what, we, we expanded the scope of what we wanted out of the system, and so that delayed the implementation. This is a new product that, the web-based product is something, I think, new for Cartograph, so they had to develop some of the tools. So, that'll be ready to go here very shortly. And I think, I did, we do have a report in here on the Bliss Tennis Courts, and those, that had been requested in terms of what the plan is for the year and how much that costs, so I do have that detailed there. And also have an update on the StatNet project that we're doing with UMass Boston, the Collin Center. That's another effort that is, that is underway. I think we'll get, again, I think we'll get good outcomes from that and learn more about. The meetings we've had with them, where they identify what other towns have studied and how they've used the information have been really eye-opening for us. And then I do have, it's kind of buried in the back here, but I do have my, my own report where I summarize some of these issues. And I, there is a information in here on the bike lanes, I know that Alex was the one that requested that, and he's not here, but I found that illustrative. And I should note that the middle, Williams Middle School boilers, which were debated during the capital plan, were, there may be an issue where the warrant, the warrant article may not be sufficient to fund the project. And we're trying to, there's a report on that in my, here in your packet, that goes into detail on that. So.
Okay. I'll, open it to any, any questions from the members of the select board?
You mean, on his report?
On his report? I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Well, yeah, obviously, the one that just glares is the, the warrant article that we've approved on something that we asked questions about, and it should have been vetted by everybody, including my mother. And now we find out the estimate is not even close to being what it should have been on those boilers. I, I just don't understand.
Richard, I'd like to defer that a minute or two.
You got a better one?
No, I, I think that's the key one, but I think we need to discuss what we, as a select board, may want to do when the, when that article comes up for the warrant, because I think there are some options, and I think it's worth a, a couple of minutes of discussion. I just, if, so let's put that one off and see if there are any other questions about just general issues on the town manager's report, because I do want to get back to that one. Any other? You have any other? Paul, you have any? I've got two, Stephen, just quickly. There's a report from, I think it's Park and Rec report, that said the Long Meadow Youth Softball Baseball Association wants to name a baseball field at Turner Park after a longstanding volunteer. The process, I would assume, is that they make that nomination to the select board. Do they have any plans on doing that, or it's just going to show up right now in the, I mean, at some point, they've got to, if they want to do it, they got to formulate it, so.
Yeah.
I just thought I'd pass that along.
This came up at a previous board meeting, and I had gone out and tried to connect with other towns to find out what their naming policies are, and didn't hear back from anybody, so I went out and kind of Googled it. And I've got a handful of naming policies from towns' websites. We currently don't have one.
We don't have a policy, but we've named plenty of things after people.
Correct, but I, it's, it is on an ad hoc basis.
Right.
And so, I intend to make a policy recommendation.
Okay.
To develop a, a naming policy. In terms of what is precedent for the town for these matters, I'll defer to the board.
All I'm saying is that it can't just happen, it needs to have a process. That, and so, it sounds like you're on top of it, Stephen, and I, I welcome coming back with a, a policy on, on naming things, because we're, obviously, over time, going to run out of things to name, I guess, but. Anyway, that was one comment. The other question I have is, there was a, I think it was also in Parks and Rec, "Town resident shared concerns about unleashed dogs in Bliss Park." And that's been a, kind of a longstanding issue in, in town. I think it's the east end of Bliss Park is, you know, we've had people who are butters complaining about it and stuff like that. I don't know what we intend to do as a board, but if we've got violations of bylaws going on there, my comment is, rather than just somebody be concerned about it, they ought to do something. We, we need to do something about it.
I think that was actually the answer the last time I was brought up. Enforcement of the bylaw. As a police department.
You go by, well, you know, you can go by there any morning, any afternoon, and any evening, and there are dogs running free in Bliss Park. And, and it's not all of Bliss Park, it's the, I guess it's the northeast corner of Bliss Park.
Right. It's behind the tennis court, or behind the little shed there, and there's an area where people walk in. And it's a wooded area, it's, it's just a little trail, and, and the majority of people walk without a leash in there, absolutely.
Right. But, and, and more importantly, I mean, people are driving their cars back in there, which I guess they can or can't do. I'll tell you, I was personally shocked when, one winter day, the town actually plowed that for the people to drive their cars back there, when I had no understanding why the town would plow a, a park that has no business being plowed in the wintertime. So, it's clearly, we're aiding and abetting whoever's using this for whatever they're using it for, and it's been a longstanding issue. And I got to tell you, personally, I'd love to figure out a way to get a handle on that. And my answer is, what the people there will tell you is, let's get a dog park. And we've been talking to the Parks and Recreation Committee about that for, for a long, long time. And I think if we had a, a real dog park, we'd have less issues with the, you know, I think we'd have less issues.
You'd get a whole set of issues.
We'd have different issues. How's that, Paul?
Absolutely.
But anyway, so, just, just a, a noted comment.
What, do we want, are we directing Stephen to find a solution or recommendations? Or?
I'll make it, I'll notify the chief that his concerns have been raised, and that he should instruct patrol officers to keep an eye on that and enforce the bylaw.
Yeah, I, I guess. I mean, we talked earlier about it, having a dog complaint, and one of the premises of the dog complaint is the dog has been unleashed. Now, it hasn't been in Bliss Park, but it's been elsewhere. But I, I think the whole point is, you know, we're either going to have bylaws or we're not going to have bylaws. And personally, I'd like to see us push the Parks and Rec Committee to, to try to move a little bit more aggressively on, on identifying and establishing a dog park, because until we do that, we don't have an alternative for the people who take their dogs there. I mean, as much as I may say it's not a great place to be, we don't have an alternative for them. So.
My only, my only point is, A, it's a bylaw issue. Bylaw issues can only be handled by the people enforcing the bylaws. If there's complaints, they should go to the police department, police department should patrol the area, or at least stake it out. I mean, we, I, I've walked back there for years and never had an issue, and I understand that doesn't, that's anecdotal. I get it. You know, there's a lot of dogs running around, some of them are scary, and, but most of them, I, I think most dog owners understand that they're not going to let their dog off a leash, that. But that aside, it's a bylaw issue. I don't think, I don't think we need to direct a town manager, other than if there's a complaint, Park and Rec should be in touch with the police department ahead of time, already, when that thing was, was issued. Just to let them know that if someone came to their board to, to tell them that there's an issue. The fact that we're talking about it just so, shows me that it wasn't handled in the right way to begin with, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments or questions about the town manager's reports, before we get back to the issue at hand Mr. Foster identified? And, and I will preface it for the people at home by saying that we have updated, we have a, a proposed capital expenditure request. And I'm just, I just want to pull the right thing out. I believe it's for $100,000 for replacing two boilers at Williams Middle School, that's part of Article 9. And what we got in a memo recent is that there's now a, a concern that, that that amount of money will be insufficient to replace two boilers at Williams Middle School, and may, in fact, be insufficient to replace one boiler at, at Williams Middle School. And so, I think the question we have, or I have, is, as a select board who's endorsed this article, where do we want to go? And I've given it some thought in the last 24, 36 hours, but I'd like to hear what other people may think.
Can I give a little background?
Sure.
Um, how the original request ended up in the capital plan and recommended by me to the board was based on the capital planning request form that is standard for all projects. And with the request form was included, estimate from Cody and Sons, who is our, an HVAC company that we do a lot of business with. In fact, they are on-call for certain town, for certain functions that our town employees can't handle for HVAC work. And it said clearly, "Replace the boiler and burners with a new one at the Williams Middle School," and the price was $43,800. Therefore, replacing them both was understood to be $100,000 based on conversations from our facilities director and Cody. And I think as the facilities director lays out in his report, it was really a lot of telephone conversations about this, there really isn't a lot of documentation back and forth. But, you know, they, this is, I think, how, this is how the research was done, and I think that, that at the time, the folks that were involved in the planning was comfortable with that as an estimate. So, the, the two factors that have emerged are, one, we also have an on-call engineering and architecture firm, and they have now looked at the project and done a more in-depth analysis. And to do the whole, to replace both boilers with new controls and new piping and everything else is over $500,000. So, and there was conversations between the original provider of the estimate, Cody, and Reinhardt, our engineer, and I think there's some confusion between those two parties. And it turns out that Cody, who made the original proposal or gave us the original estimate, is now kind of backing off of that and saying, "Well, I didn't include this," or "It was just, you know, I didn't really go visit the site." And it wasn't evident in any of the documentation that came in for the capital planning process. So, I think that, you know, the issue for, to me, aside from the need, I think, to address the boilers, is that this process for capital planning that has, the process that was established before I got here, clearly has yielded a result that, you know, is not satisfactory at a time where it should have been known what the actual costs were going to be, and should not be printed on the warrant unless we know specifically that that's what it's going to cost. And I will accept responsibility for the fact that I took for granted that the process that has been in place was sufficient to not yield a circumstance like this, but clearly it does not. And that's something we'll have to, we are going to, to address, both from a personnel standpoint, as well as a process standpoint in the next fiscal year's capital plan.
If I can kind of focus the discussion here, I'd like to focus the discussion away from, from blame and more toward, so what do we do going forward when we've got, we're asking the town to put aside $100,000 for a project as stated that is, appears to be insufficient? I won't say it clearly is, because somebody at one point thought we could do something. We clearly cannot replace two boilers at Williams Middle School. We might be able to replace the firebox of one or the firebox of two, we might be able to replace some piping, but replacing two boilers is a generally broad statement, that it doesn't look like we're sufficient to do it. And I'd like to frame the discussion by saying there are several alternatives. One is that, you know, we decide, because if you'll note that the warrant article says, "Take any other actions relative thereto," that when we read the article, we delete that line and not spend that, not appropriate that $100,000. Or, the second thing is, we appropriate the $100,000, see what we can do to fix up the boilers for $100,000, or, or increase their reliability, I should say. I don't think we're going to fix them, but what, because if I recall, the discussion that started this was, "We can't afford to have, the middle of winter, have Williams Middle School without heat." And so, we need to increase the, the reliability of the boilers. And the, the recommendation was, the way to do it is replace them. You know, and so, you know, can we use that $100,000 to improve the reliability of the boilers? And if we do that, is it appropriate to leave it in capital? Or do we move it into a maintenance line item so we actually don't ask for it to be appropriated by capital? And then afterwards, we go back in the fall for a town meeting and move that money into a maintenance line item so we can do maintenance on the boilers to the extent of $100,000? Or do we do nothing and take that money somewhere else? I mean, you can sit here and listen, there's three or four or five potential alternatives to handle it. But I think personally, that going forward and asking the town to appropriate $100,000 for something we know can't be done for $100,000 is kidding ourselves and kidding the people at town meeting.
What is, Stephen, what's your recommendation?
Well, I, there are, again, it's, the level of confusion on this was really disappointing to me. And so, in my conversations with town staff on what do we really need to do and what are the recommendations, I mean, I have not spoken directly to the folks at Reinhardt or Mr. Cody about this. But I think from my understanding, there are options somewhere between what was originally quoted and $560,000. And like I said in my, in my report, the boilers need to be addressed in some way, but the concern that was raised during this discussion was, is it worth doing if we are gonna replace the middle school, which has been a very real policy discussion in the town? And the need for new middle schools has been something that the school committee has been promoting. You know, I think we decided it's worth $100,000 to do it. And that was, I think, some of the nature of discussion at the board level. Is it worth 560? Well, that I'm not so sure about. So I think between now and town meeting, I guess my recommendation is, get back with the engineering firm, the facilities director, and the HVAC contractor and figure out what are our options. Because if we can come up with something to, like you said, Mark, build the level of surety in those boilers and make sure that they are in good working condition as best as possible for the winter time, and it'll cost 125, well then it's, you know, that's a more approachable policy decision than it's either nothing or 500. So I think I'd wanna get a better sense of what are our options on that spectrum.
Richard. Okay, I guess I'm the only one that's not surprised. Because I'm not surprised at this. This is the same thing I brought to the board's attention for the last four years. I've consistently said on camera that projects that are submitted are not thought out, they're guesstimates. Half the time, you find out it doesn't even cover a scope of work, it's appropriated. And we, once again, we've got burned pretty bad on this. We also had this discussion before this was put on the site. Because I made the question, I said $50,000 even numbers all the time, you know, $50,000, you know, no cents or anything else. The estimates don't even smell right. And I'm not as easy to push over on this one. I'm tired of it personally. You know, we dedicate ourself to come in here and deal with town business. And we've identified this problem many years in a row. And now we keep saying, well, we just gotta get past this. Well, that's like saying, I just gonna take one more drink, and then I'm gonna stop. Okay? It's not gonna stop. And we know it's not gonna stop. I don't know why we suddenly think we're gonna whisk the magic wand and this stops. This here is a classic. Now, we've been panicking strictly now to these boilers. I don't trust anybody right now. There's nobody's gonna come in here and tell me something that I'm gonna believe on those boilers unless I go see it and talk to a person myself. There's no one has credibility with me, Stephen, right now to talk to me about these boilers. And I know you're smiling. Present who's got credibility.
I haven't known in this capital planning process of anyone who has credibility with you on any subject, so I'm not surprised to hear that comment.
That sarcasm instead of a comment.
No, I'm being completely straight with you, Richard. Every item you've gone through and done a lot of research and analysis, but you've dissected every single item.
Have you ever proven me wrong, sir?
Have I ever proven you wrong? I think we're still, jury's not out on that one yet.
Yeah, well, you're gonna have to get a bigger jury to find me wrong, because these are easy things to jump on.
Can I ask a question?
Easy things to, no, I'm stalking.
Okay.
And, so you're asked, what do we do? Five, throw $500,000 at? No, I wouldn't even consider it. We don't know what we got, what our problem is. Who are you gonna trust anymore, Mark? Who are we gonna go that's gonna give us a straight scoop on this project?
Then answer the solution. What's the solution?
Well, the solution is get somebody that's got credibility to respond to this board.
Who?
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 How about a licensed firm that does this for a living? Instead of, instead of some of these on-call that comes in and says, hey, I can do it for $100,000, guesstimate, and then it comes back and says, oh, wait a minute, jeez, I didn't know you wanted to replace the pipes. Well, that's gonna be $500,000 now. I mean, this is worse than guessing. And I'm serious. I, it just irritates me. Because our dollars are getting thin. We cut programs this year to fund this budget. We cut 150, I think, out of asphalt and $100,000 out of sidewalks to fund this budget the way it is right now. And now we find out we got a zinger in here that isn't even 1/5 the amount of money that now another firm says we really need. And Stephen, I understand, it can go for, replace the boiler into make it a Cadillac. And that's where we seem, we seem to be between replacement and Cadillac on all of our systems. Because $500,000 repair to replace two boilers is unbelievable. I mean, it's not even comprehensive.
I think, can I interject?
Now you can.
Because I agree with you on the point of bringing somebody, and that's where we went to Reinhardt, who's our engineering firm, to kind of get to, to scope this out a little better. Now, the fact that that probably, that, not probably, the fact that that should have been done before the application for capital planning was submitted, I completely agree with you, and I'm, believe me, I'm frustrated by that as well. I don't wanna be here having this conversation. That said, the, we drill down into the boilers themselves and the actual equipment, it's sections that are the problem. And as we've learned about these boilers, they replace sections over time. And so, it's really getting into that gradient level of detail of which section is now bad. You know, there's a history of these with fixing the seals, that I didn't include that report here, because the discussion point was, what do we do about the warrant article? I agree with that. But I do have a history on the work that has been done and how we kind of got to the notion that we should put a replacement on there. Replacement of the boilers for 560 is high-efficiency condensing boilers, all-new automated controls, I mean, tip to tail, the whole thing. I don't know if I would describe it as a Cadillac, but it is a much more comprehensive project than simply keeping the same old controls and popping one boiler round for another. And like I said, the, I thought that we were getting a boiler replacement project, because that is what the quote, the estimate from the HVAC contractor said. Now, you know, I, how that now is not the case, I will have to ask him that directly. But I agree with you, Richard. I think that this is where I made the comment about the process going forward. And I don't know how, when you were on capital planning, you addressed these issues before you made the capital planning recommendations to the select board. But it's clear this process needs to be refined.
Yeah, you're right. I did make recommendations, because I would come in and tell the select board, this project's not ready to go.
But Stephen, let me answer that. When I was on capital planning, I walked down to the boiler and found out what was going on. I happen to know a little bit about boilers, having bought a few commercial boilers. But like you said, the question is, do you have, you know, what I'm told is it leaks. Now, that means that nowhere, somebody said to me, the firebox is bad. It leaks. That's pipes, that's tubes, that's, you know, everything inside the boiler. That's different from replacing the whole boiler. Now, is it financially viable to do that? Sometimes it's not. But sometimes, when you don't have $500,000, it is. And sometimes it is when all you're trying to do is gain reliability and not necessarily gain efficiency or spend a lot of money, because you're not wedded to these boilers for the next 30 years or 25 years. And so, the question is, who knows enough to walk this boiler and say, what we need is to assure that we will have no days to the best we can, and you can never be positive, that we will have no days next year during the school year where we will not have school because the boilers at Williams Middle School failed. That, to me, is what I need to do, and as far as I'm concerned, that's my only obligation. It's not to improve the efficiency, it's not to replace the boilers, it's not, it's to make sure that the school can run when it's scheduled to run. Assuming that next winter, we might have just as cold a winter as we had this year when both boilers have to run a lot of days. And so the question is, who have we got, whether they're a town employee or not a town employee, I think this is piggybacking on Richard's comments, who can tell us that? What's the least amount of money we can spend to have the highest probability that those boilers will run through next winter?
That's exactly the question. And I think that's, I think the people who have been involved in this issue that I've identified, facilities director, the engineer, our on-call engineer, engineer slash architect who's doing this stuff for us, you know, as a matter of our relationship with them, and the HVAC contractor who, again, has done a lot of work on town buildings, I think they all possess the knowledge to come up with an answer. I just don't think they applied that knowledge in the right, at the right time and in the right sequence.
Well, when the project came, I'm just talking to myself, that's all I'm doing. Because this project came forth, it was vetted, the questions were asked, and it shows up on our warrant. And now we say, well, possibly the people that put it in there didn't know what they were doing? I mean, I'm just spellbound. I just, I sit there in total shock.
Richard, I'm not spellbound, I'm embarrassed.
Yeah, it's just embarrassing.
I'm personally embarrassed, because we asked the questions, we thought we got, got the assurances, and we come back and, you know, add this to center school windows, you know, blend tennis courts and all the other projects that we've had, and I can probably go through the list of projects we've had, that, you know, substantially under budgeted. And the only thing I can say is, thank goodness we found out about it before the town meeting as opposed to after town meeting. Because we have the opportunity to, to address this in an appropriate manner. And again, I would just ask that before next week or our next meeting, and certainly before town meeting, we identify whether $100,000 in capital makes any sense, or whether that money ought to be pulled out of capital for us to theoretically, you know, have the town, we can't do it at the same town meeting, but we can certainly move it till the fall to have it put back into, into expense money to have it.
So why don't we have this on the next agenda? And Stephen can have a answer. Because I'm sure no one on this board and our town manager is not satisfied with where we are right now. And now we have to find a solution to this. And we don't really have the information on what the correct solution is. I like Mark's delineation of the question, which is, what can we do to get through the winter and what is that gonna cost us?
That was part of our discussion before this article was even approved. We talked about that. We even went to the feasibility saying, how about we replace one? Because these are staging boilers.
And we were given incorrect information. And we all agree with that. So now we've gotta figure out where to go from here.
Yeah, Paul.
I understand how you led this off, and I don't agree with it, but I understand what you're saying. Because what we have is, we have a failure. This isn't a failure of someone who is in the facilities department. This is a failure of our facilities manager. Okay, our facilities director, the person in charge of every single building in town. We were told at that meeting, we had the director of DPW, and our facilities director wasn't there, but we had the director of DPW telling us, these boilers are in danger of imminent failure. If I'm Ms. Colton, please tell me, imminent failure. They have to be replaced, they both have to be replaced. Someone asked a question, it might have been you, Richard, someone, about, that was what was said.
I think it was said by the superintendent, not the director of public works.
At the meeting, okay, I'll correct it. At the meeting it was presented, these boilers are in danger of imminent failure. We were told we had to replace two. Now, whether it was the Department of Public Works or superintendent, because it was a joint presentation, so to speak. But our facilities director is the person who went out and got the estimate. And it was, it's up to the facilities director, not the director of DPW, to present that to us and come up with the right information. So we have a failure. A failure of our on-call engineer and a failure of our facilities director. And while you may be embarrassed and Richard might be upset, what, the issue is, the issue is twofold. First of all, I don't think that, if you're gonna, if we're gonna decide between now and town meeting to come up with a better estimate and come up with a plan for now and town meeting, we approved $100,000 with the assumption we're gonna have all this energy savings and we're gonna replace two boilers. And I don't, I know, I know enough to be dangerous that, I understand when someone's called in and said, here's an issue, how do we fix it? The disparity between 100,000 and 560,000 is this. If it was 100 and 150, that's, that's an error of, I didn't think about that little thing. Or I added 15 more hours worth of labor type of thing. But we have, we have a 500%, increase in the cost of the project from another vendor who supposedly knows more than the on-call architect, I guess, that's what. And I just, I think that the issue is, we were told that we need to replace both of them, even though neither one of them failed last year, or this year. So neither one failed. But I think the year before, there was a failure of one of them. Okay? So the issue is, do we need to replace them as just because they're ready to fail? And if it's not an imminent danger of failing, and if that was, if the superintendent misspoke, then we need to know what's the relative percentage of them failing. Right? Because if, if they're running fine, and, you know, you know this, if they're running fine, they're running fine.
Could run for 10 more years.
Could fail tomorrow.
Right.
Absolutely.
I don't know if there's a way to estimate that, though. I predict that reliably.
Well, there's gotta be some sort of efficiencies they can measure.
Well, the question is, but Stephen, we know things as, are they leaking? You know, are the tubes leaking? You know, if the tubes in the boiler are leaking, you got a problem. If they're not leaking, if you got cracks in the refractory and so you're having, that's, you know, there's ways of looking at the different aspects of a boiler to understand whether it's the piping, the tubes, the refractory, the controls, whatever it is.
They understand what's wrong with, they understand what's wrong with the boilers very clearly. Where the disconnect is on this is, what is the cost to fix that condition and what do we get for that money? And as you can see from, from the report from the facilities director, the, there was some reliance on the initial estimate from the HVAC contractor, and enough questioning probably was not done at that level to make sure that that estimate was reliable. Because I asked the same questions all of you asked, and at the time the decision was made, I think every, that the facilities director and the director of public works believed the answers they were giving to be true, because that was the information we all had. It was only after that we went through all of this, that it turned out that it likely is not the case. And that's, and again, that is upsetting and embarrassing to me as well.
And I think there's two issues. One is, how are we gonna fix this right now? Fortunately, it's before town meeting. The second is, how are we going to deal with this going forward? And I think you understand on the capital planning, we have to have a better process going forward. I think you've said in past meetings, the form alone really needs to be taken care of, let alone the process of the work going behind the forms. As Richard's pointed out numerous times, when we look at some of the CPC projects, they had wonderful detailed estimates, and I think that's what we're looking for going forward, which means we really have to start capital planning May 14th to really do this right. But I think everyone agrees, this is a terrible mistake. Let's see what we can do to fix it and fix the process going forward.
Paul, I just wanted to respond to your comment if I could. I don't think we're gonna have the numbers before, in fact, I know, we can't have the numbers before town meeting. I think we just have to decide, you know, as a select board, what do we wanna do with this $100,000? Do we just wanna pull it off the warrant article when we, when we make the, you know, make the motion and push it till the fall? You know, which, by the way, loses us this, doing anything for this heating season, because it's November, to appropriate the money. Or do we say, let's take a shot? And, you know, at this point, we can't put it into the budget unless we propose an amendment to the budget to put it into expenses. You know, but the point is that, that, you know, not doing anything at the town meeting now for capital, pushing it off till the fall, means we don't have money to do anything to those boilers should something happen this fall. Or certainly not to do anything during the summer in preparation for the fall. That's my dilemma, Richard. And I'm, I'm really, really annoyed. I, you know, it doesn't show like you are. But, but the problem I've got here is, is we have a very short window to do something, and either it's capital or it's not capital, and we gotta, only can do it through town meetings, so.
I don't, you made a statement that we won't have numbers by town meeting. I'm not, I'm not sure of that, because I know they have been working on coming up with alternative scenarios. And if it ends up that we don't have good, reliable information by town meeting, then that'll be the decision as to what we do. But I think we will have something better to at least inform the decision, even if the decision is gonna be made on grounds that aren't related to a range of options. If it's just gonna be kind of an up or down thing.
Problem is, what if the numbers we have by town meeting, Stephen, are anything above $100,000? We may have the number, but we don't have the money.
Well, let's, let's see what's gonna happen. If we could put it on the next meeting, then we'll have some, maybe more meat to discuss what our options are.
Stephen, in Adrian's report here, in the last paragraph, he talks about his opinion of what to do. And in the last sentence says, in the interim, he suggests, before the next season, is that we install blend pumps to the boilers to minimize thermal shock and blow, and closely monitor them. My question's twofold, is that, what I like to know is that, if that is a valid solution in the sense of reducing the potential for them to fail, and how much time would that buy us in the, in the sense of, if we go to, between now and fall town meeting and say, if we pull the hundred grand out and we say, all right, it is gonna cost 360, and then we're debating then what to do? Does that process that he suggested actually help us minimize the risk of failure? Because, you know, I don't know, he says it here, I don't know what that, I understand it also says closely monitor the boilers.
Yeah, I mean, there are, like I said, there's a whole nother report that I received from Adrian that talks about the history of the boilers, the leaks, the spray seals they've done, and all the stuff they've done to Band-Aid these things as they've, as they've gone along. I didn't include that, because I was reporting on a process failure. And I honestly don't think that's too strong a word. So, the answer is, I think based, and Adrian knows an awful lot about these boilers, and I think he believes that this is some alternative measure that can help out. But obviously, to Richard's comment about credibility, I think I want another set of eyes on it and have somebody else take a look. Have Reinhardt and Cody and Adrian sit down together and really say, well, what are the issues and what are we gonna get for 100? And how much, how much is the Band-Aid worth to us?
I don't think they've been doing Band-Aid maintenance. I know you said that, but I don't really, because these are commercial boilers, you don't have to do Band-Aid maintenance on a commercial boiler. And I don't want the public thinking that that's what we do is Band-Aid maintenance, because I don't believe that's what we have done. We've done appropriate repairs to keep them going.
Appropriate repairs to a recurring, a recurringly problematic issue, unique to this brand of boiler.
Right, because they're, they're commercial boilers, and they're rebuildable up to the point parts are no longer available.
Correct. Which is kind of where we are.
Yeah, I mean, that, but I understand, that may be, but I don't know that for a fact personally myself. And I'm, I'm kind of from Missouri. You gotta show me. That's all I can tell you. all I can tell you. And I, I'd like to see this in person. I like to touch and feel and talk and ask questions about it. But the $100,000, yeah, Mark, it's there, and you have, you have to have it approved. The money has to go forward, even if it's, even if it's held at bay, and not authorized to be put in anything. We don't have time to stop it. We don't, certainly don't have time to add more to it.
But, but if, what we end up doing is repairs, it's not capital. We can't appropriate money for capital and spend it for repairs.
It'll be over 10,000.
So, we're going to do capital repairs to...
Yeah, I understand.
Replacement of parts.
My suggestion would be take the $100,000 and fund the reserve fund. Between now and then, as the price comes in, and it comes in, we have enough time to debate it. If it's a reasonable amount near the $100,000, then we have the ability to spend it without having to go into town meeting, because they can do a reserve fund request for an emergency repair or whatever's needed. If it's something astronomical, then we obviously have that debate about, is it worth it to replace them with the anticipation of a, of a new middle school? And I think if you leave it in a reserve fund with, while notifying the finance committee, this is why we're doing it. So, they understand, the estimate's way off, the second estimate's off than the first one, we need to get a better idea. And, but I think we need to discuss that with them, that it's not yours to use for, you know, something else, you know? But that, and then if it's not spent out of the finance committee, it's going to go back to free cash.
And for clarification on one thing, I understand your point on maintenance. Well, maintenance is a loosely used term here, because this repair could be a 10-year repair.
Yeah, okay.
It has a useful life. I don't want anybody to think we're just doing maintenance, because I'd be the first one to stand with you and scream about maintenance.
No, that's fine. Paul, I like your suggestion of potentially doing that. And I think we just need to get our ducks in order here, you know, we've got, still got three weeks to do that.
And if the numbers come through before town meeting, then we have a decision to make. If not, then we can move it over to the finance, the reserve fund.
We can report on that next meeting.
All right. All right. Marie, I don't know what else you had in mind, but that's everything that, that was in our, on our minutes. We got select board comments, though, that people wanted to...
I have a comment that's going to fall right in, right exactly where this discussion has been.
We're not going to do that here, we're going to do that in executive session.
The comment, the comment, and we don't have much time to respond to, but I had to, I just, I've got to get a comment out to the board. Well, obviously, if you look around town, there's a lot of signs showing up around town about equity and education. And we know, we do know that there's a kindergarten funding for full day, and it, it's being rumored that it'd be put as an amendment to the budget on the floor. And this is going to happen with our form of government. That's why we have this type of government. This is part of the uniqueness in having this form of government. I guess what's starting to get to me now is the fact of how we respond to these issues. And I don't mean negatively or positively, but what do we do as an executive body? We, this year, cut our budget. We cut out of capital, and we cut needed stuff to fund our base budget. And we have never taken the practice of going to the town manager and say, "Okay, I'd like you to give us 200,000, 300,000, 400,000, 500,000 hits," and give us an impact statement, and tell us, "What are you going to do if you're hit by 500,000? What are you going to, what service are you going to shut down this year? Or what service are you going to permanently secure?" And this is what happens in the federal government. In any reliable governmental agency, when they have a cut and they can't pass it on, they have to reduce services. We're in a very different position, because we can't reach by regulation over, and really force the schools to do any cutting. And that's the law. That's the way it is. But on our side, we cannot tolerate taking three or four, $500,000 hits against our budget, and then simply run to free cash, or to run into our capital program and take this money and fund these things. It can't continue. We're going down a very dangerous slope, and we're slipping quicker than we can get a grasp of ropes to pull us back out. And you know, what I, what I want to present to the board was just this discussion. I'd be fully prepared at this point, if we were hit with a three or $400,000 budget adjustment, for us to actually shut a service down in our community this coming operating season that would equal that service. Because we've got to continue with our other programs. We cannot continue to act like this has no occurrence on us. The general public must understand the reaction to their votes. And it's not the fact that we do something behind the scenes that's going to show up 10 years. It's got to be something that's out in front of us. Now, unfortunately, the schools come in and say, "If I don't get my 400, I'm going to cut math, I'm going to cut music." And, and these are the battle cries of the, of the schools, and they work very well across our continent. And I don't, I wouldn't wish they do it any better, because that's discretionary things. But we have to also have discretionary things that we must face our community and says, "As a result of this, for instance, maybe this year, we're going to shut down one of the pools." And maybe that pool's not going to open again, folks, because our budget has hit that. Either that, or we're going for an override to open the pool back up. But simply to take it out of our routine maintenance and free cash and kick the can down the road, I think it's the wrong way to move forward. We can't do it any longer. That's my point I wanted to press to the board, because this has been bothering me ever since, and I'm not, for the record, I'm not opposed to all of this for the full-day kindergarten, although I'm the first one to tell you, it's nothing to do with the educational program that we just brought, brought in, the Common Core. Full-day kindergarten, there's no nexus between the two, not by law. There is subjectively across the country, if you look into different demographics, where there's value of this, that, but that's another discussion. But this, this was a program that, that we alone in this town decided that we wanted to bring forward. And we brought it forward with the option that you, if you wanted it, you could have, you could have to pay for it as a parent. And what, what would have been okay if we just left it right there. But then, there were some other statements apparently that come out and said, "But if your children don't have the full-day kindergarten, they're not going to get the full benefits of Common Core." So, that spun a whole different outlight on it. But then, if we get back to the other thing, it gets into philosophical thing, would Common Core and our children, do they need full-day kindergarten, all that? And that goes back and forth a long way. And there's a lot of experts will tell you, both, both sides of the fence. And I've done a lot of reading, and I've talked to a lot of people since it come up, so I, I don't have to make a full statement. But I can say, we as a board must start making intelligent decisions and say, "We can't do it anymore. We're going to have to show impacts in our community for these actions."
Richard, I'd like to just respond in, in a way that I think you're correct. And I think that because there is a potential, I don't know how high, large, great, that, that the town meeting could vote to spend additional amounts of money, I would ask that our, our chair schedule a select board meeting for the day after town meeting, we can cancel it if we need to, where we could then address the issues just that you spoke about. If the town meeting votes to spend money, that needs to get, it needs to come from somewhere else, that we then set apart, set, you know, proceed to set aside time to figure out where that money's going to come from. Because it, there is no, no such thing as free money in this town.
No.
Not even free cash is free.
No. Can I respond? I know the select board comments, no?
You know, I mean, at this point, it's their opinion, Stephen.
We're working on it.
No, but, but I think, nevertheless, I'd like to see us schedule a meeting, because if we need, I hope we don't need to, but if we need to, we're going to have to act and act fairly quickly.
Well, the issue is, do you schedule a meeting before the town meeting or after? Because if we're really going to be making serious cuts, I think that the residents have the right.
No, you'd schedule a meeting now to be after the town meeting.
Well, I'm saying, should it be after the town meeting or before? Because maybe residents will need to know where the cuts are going to be when they go and make their votes. And I think that we really should be thinking about where we're going to be making these decisions as we go forward, because I'm sure that's one of the first things that's going to be asked at the floors. So, what is the ramification of this vote? And if we really don't know it, I think it's something we need to know ahead of time. So...
I prefer to other people on the board. I, I hate to, I really, really hated the process three, four years ago, where we had everybody worked up of what we might do, might do, and we never had to do it. I'd rather react to a known situation than, and I understand that, that there's value in the, pardon the expression, the threat, but, but that's not, just not my, my style, Marie. I mean, to say, you know, "Well, if you do this, we're going to cut music and art." That's not the way I think we ought to run the general government side of business. When faced with what we're going to do, you know, what we need to do, I think we can address that. Also, just so people understand, is at that point, then, there's an opportunity for people in town to say, "We don't like the fact that the select board is going to cut whatever they're going to cut." They have the opportunity to use a referendum process to overturn the town meeting decision. And I think that, that there's a, an opportunity there that, you know, people ought to know about, but they ought to have a basis for doing it, and that basis will happen after the, after the town meeting.
Just a point of clarification only, and I'm not trying to start trouble either, but that process that you're referring to, there's such a short amount of time requirement on that it would almost virtually be impossible for us to have a meeting and let the outside people know what the impacts were, and then they have still enough time to file a referendum. Because it's a very short span of time.
And actually...
Yeah, it's like five days.
By doing that, also, you allow a, for us to work a budget in a deficit, which I think we have to spend a little more time thinking about how we're going to do this, or maybe...
Your call, Marie.
My only suggestion is this, is that I don't want to have a meeting where we're going to argue about what we're going to cut. Because what you might want to cut's going to be different from me and you, and you, and so forth. And I'd hate to spend two, three hours saying, and then come to a consensus to cut numbers for X, when we don't even know what X is yet.
Yeah, I would look very, very strongly towards the town manager.
Yes.
I would, I would look for the town manager, supposedly has a pulse on this entire organization, to at least come forward with some really firm proposal, and then let us debate them.
Right. And whether or not that means, it shouldn't be beforehand. And that's all I'm saying, is I just, I don't think that, I, if the town manager's already kind of taken some steps to be ready for that, that's great. But for the town manager to come to us and say, "Here's what I represent, or present to cancel or cut," without us knowing what the dollar amount is, and we start rambling off programs, and nothing happens at town meetings, then we didn't, then we just banged a drum for no reason.
Stephen? I can ask, I do want to ask a point of clarification. I'm aware that this amendment is out there. The proponent of it has officially corresponded with me, saying that she intends to offer it. My planned approach is to be ready at town meeting with a response to what, really the number's 500,000. What that would, really the devastating impact that would have to just take $500,000 out of a balanced general fund, or excuse me, general government budget, and add it back to the schools. And so, the CFO and I are going to go over what are fixed versus flexible, you've heard me talk about that before, costs are, and illustrate the point to town meeting while they're deliberating this amendment. If that's not the approach you want me to take, then let me know now. If you want to do that the next day, we can do that, too.
I think my only question is, I would like to really know what, what you're really going to throw out there. Because sooner or later, we're going to have to make that decision.
Well, we already have a meeting the night before town meeting.
Yeah. But I, I agree with you, it's time.
My personal opinion is, I don't think you should lead the, lead the charge. I think the select board should lead the charge. It's our budget.
Well, he's advising, though.
Right, right. I mean, I, you know, but, but, but he should advise, but I don't think the town manager should stand up and, and argue with a citizen at town meeting. And, and, and it becomes a debate. And I won't say argue, you should not be debating a citizen. That should fall to, to the people who, who signed the budget document, which is us. I mean, I'd ask that the school committee do the same thing. I'm not sure whether or not, how much they're going to do it. I've had some discussions with some members of the school committee about doing that. But the point is, Stephen, I, I think that that's not your, your battle to fight. It's ours.
Then I will...
But certainly, you know, for you to have the, have the information and the recommendations and the backing of your department managers and all that kind of stuff, but that's my...
We can make, we can, I will endeavor to make a report then on the 12th. That's reasonable.
Yeah, well, I understand Mark's point, too, is, you know, it's likely our battle to fight on the floor.
Yeah.
And it insulates you.
But we will be...
Because you're running, you're running, you're running the government and, and making your recommendations to us on what we think the cuts would be, so...
Yeah.
Are there any other select board comments?
No.
Marie?
Yes. The 25th is Earth Day, and I understand there's going to be a tree planted. The tree committee was speaking to me, and so, there should be a planting, I think possibly on town green. And on the same topic, I attended the emergency planning by WMECO, and the police chief and the fire chief were there also. And an interesting point is, after speaking to the head of the tree committee, I asked them about grants for tree planting, and they said, "That's a possibility." So, I'll be contacting them and see if WMECO is able to...
As long as you don't plant them under their wires.
No, but they have specific, they will actually come, and we're looking to maybe do a tree symposium on what trees can be planted, and how you do what can and cannot be done on the tree belts. And so, that's something coming along. But WMECO said they would also help us with educational information.
Anything else? I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session to return to open session.
So moved.
For the purposes of non-union collective bargaining.
Second.
Motion's made. Second, we need a roll call vote.
And arbitration.
And arbitration, yeah. So, we need a roll call vote.
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you all. The meeting is adjourned. Is suspended.
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 Suspended.